All right, good morning, everyone. It is a little after 8:30 in the morning, and this is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. I will go ahead and ask our clerk to call us to order and take the roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Woodin, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, La Grand, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Green, Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boojack, Brevi, Baker, Antor, Chair Steck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have fifteen or sixteen members present, five absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will now call on Commissioner Hennessy for invocation.
This morning, I will have Major Tim Meyer of the Salvation Army provide our invocation, our thoughts for the day. Majors Tim and Lori Meyer came here about a year ago, and that's when I first met him in a reorganization of the Salvation Army. He became the Grand Valley Area Commander of the Great Lakes Division, having come here after being General Secretary of the Metro Detroit area and Commander there. He holds a number of college degrees, but what seems interesting to me is that he's both a U.S. Air Force veteran, and he has completed three biblical tours of Israel. And he's been in music since he was about five, having grown up in a Salvation Army family, and did a tour of England where he was a flugelhorn soloist. And he remains a singer with the Central Territorial Staff, songsters. Now, Majors Tim and Lori have three grown daughters. They have four grandchildren. He has a number of interests. He's been involved with Kiwanis. He was a police department chaplain at one point. He's an avid runner, having completed his 12th marathon raising funds to fight human trafficking. And tonight, the Salvation Army will be highlighted sponsoring at the Whitecaps game. And so you will see them there with many of the people that they that are in their programs, many of their staff and their board members. And his interests are broad, wide, and I'm very pleased that he's here in this community and that he can provide today's thoughts as we move into our business of the day. So, Major Tim Meyer.
Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. Appreciate the opportunity. In my devotions this morning, I was reflecting on God's justice. When God's people were shown injustice, such as when the Israelites were under Egyptian oppression, God stepped in and showed them restorative justice, just like He commanded them to show others. Of course, a sad irony, as the Israelites would later go on to oppress others, even after having been oppressed themselves, ignoring the important concepts of righteousness and justice that God decreed that they should live by. Today, we continue to see injustice benefiting sometimes from the oppression of those around us and making ourselves guilty in the eyes of God. But thankfully, God had a solution to the injustice of humanity. By sending Christ, who is deemed to be fully righteous and just, to take the punishment for the sins of the guilty, God has made it so that all people can stand righteous before Him. Having been given this gift, it's now our commission to go out into the world and to give this same gift to others by showing them the righteousness and justice that God has shown us all. My life verse is this from Jeremiah 9, verses 23 and 24. "This is what the Lord says: Let not the wise man boast of his wisdom, or the strong man boast of his strength, or the rich man boast of his riches; but let him who boasts boast about this, that he understands and knows Me, that I am the Lord who exercises kindness, justice, and righteousness on earth; for in these I delight," declares the Lord. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for being the unseen person present in this room. Lord, in all the deliberations and discussions that take place today, you are the true One who is presiding. And we ask, Lord, that our thoughts, that our words, that our actions be reflective of the great grace that you have given us through Jesus Christ. I thank you for each commissioner, for each person who will come before this group today for each topic of discussion, and we ask God that all decisions would come through the filter of your love, your grace, and your justice. Thank you, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's move to our special order of business items, and we'll start with the presentation from MSU Extension Service, Mr. James Kelly here this morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Steck, and good morning, everybody. It's my pleasure to have an opportunity to present the annual report today for Kent County. I'm standing here as the interim district director. Some of you have had some contact with Aaron Moore, who served Kent County for five years. Aaron has recently transitioned to a statewide position, so I will be covering Kent County along with five others for the next few months as we go through a search process. So with that, I believe you have been sent a document earlier, an electronic document that Aaron had put together regarding our 2022 activity, and I will just highlight a few of those specific pieces this morning and be happy to entertain any questions at the end. So I'd like to start by just reminding folks of the MSU Extension mission. I've worked for many years in nonprofits and like to consider myself a mission-driven person. So the mission of MSU Extension is to help people improve their lives by bringing the vast knowledge and resources of MSU directly to individuals, communities, and businesses. And I think it's important to understand that MSU has been partnered with Kent County for now 110 years in bringing that mission to life by providing valuable services. In terms of the numbers, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but again, just highlight a few important pieces. So last year in Kent County, MSU Extension served over 10,000 Kent County residents with a variety of MSU Extension programs. Our staff hosted 117 educational programs in the county, but interestingly to me, Kent County residents attended over 1,000 MSU Extension programs, which shows the continued interest in our online delivery and our online programming. Our product center consultations assist startup businesses with product development, process equipment advice, and so much more. And you'll see a number of terms of 208 product center consultations in Kent County. And finally, we answer 407 Ask an Expert questions for Kent County residents, which is our general information hotline. You can call and send us a question on almost anything, and we will get an expert team to send you a response. The county investment is supporting the equivalent of 5.7 full-time staff in Kent County, but an additional 14 full-time equivalent staff are supported by MSU Extension and are assigned to the Kent County office. Equally important is the recognition that your investment supports the broader extension network and brings the expertise of dozens of additional staff into the county. Local investment, which exists in all 83 counties across the state, helps MSU Extension draw down state and federal resources to be invested locally. And I just put a list together of some of the grants that our Kent County team is currently active on. I will not go through those in detail, but just a few examples of those, some federal funding through Project GREEN. GREEN is an acronym standing for Generating Research and Extension to Meet Economic and Environmental Needs. The MAA, Michigan Alliance for Animal Agriculture, that's a state-funded grant. So again, your support combined with state and federal dollars helps us to have a pretty broad reach in all areas, but specifically agriculture. So we will focus on agriculture today. As most of you know, Michigan is one of the most agriculturally diverse states among the U.S. Certainly, Kent County is part of that important agricultural piece with some diverse ag commodities being grown. I'm going to play, actually, if I can get to the right point here, a quick video. From our Ag Business Institute Director.
Agriculture has deep roots within MSU Extension. Today, the industry plays a prominent and growing role in the state's economy and a high priority for our programming. We support Michigan's farmers and growers by helping them produce a safe and abundant food supply. Through our work in agriculture and agribusiness, MSU Extension focuses on animal health and well-being, fruit, vegetable, and crop production, ornamental plant sustainability and profitability, gardening, and farm management. As a result, MSU Extension helps farmers and growers create profitable and efficient business and production practices, better manage financial risks, and care for personal, family, and employee mental health. MSU Extension also supports the agriculture industry through conservation practices, protecting water resources, reducing pesticide and fertilizer use. More than 3,500 volunteers give their time to MSU Extension agricultural programs each year, serving communities through programs like Extension Master Gardener, Breakfast on the Farm, and more.
Okay, sorry, I hope you were able to catch some of that. Again, back to the diverse economy, a diverse ag economy. As a result of that diversity in Kent County, we have placed tree fruit educators, we have a nursery and greenhouse specialist, consumer horticulture specialist, bioenergy manure management. So we have brought in a team of folks to focus on what we think is important in this region and certainly in Kent County. I'll highlight just a few of those very quickly. Tree fruit education. As you know, our location in Kent County and some of the soil composition here makes it a prime area for tree fruit. Tree fruit production comes with many challenges nowadays, the primary being staying on top of pest management. So MSU Extension's role is to work with growers to bring the research of the university out into those communities to make sure that they're managing those risks appropriately. MSU Extension is also playing a big role in supporting the greenhouse and ornamental horticultural industry, which is a massive industry with annual training that helps boost production and mitigate risk. Some of the courses we taught locally were biologic control, greenhouse lighting, root zone management, and weed identification. I'm going to touch for a moment on Great Lakes Expo. Hopefully, some of you are familiar with the event that occurs in Kent County annually. Our team of vegetable, fruit, greenhouse, and community food systems educators and specialists organized 65 out of the 92 educational activities offered at the expo. For those who don't know, that is an event that draws folks from all across the country. There were about 3,000 attendees this year, which was up significantly from the previous year. There were 392 exhibitors. There's a main trade show, Farm Market. If you haven't visited that expo, I'd encourage you to stop in next year. That happens around December. In terms of tree fruit, there is a new tree fruit educator starting in Kent County in a month from now, so she will form part of a team of tree fruit experts that will bring that research again out to the farmers. As you know, the ridge is a primary area of tree fruit production in Kent County and serves the needs of not just Kent County, but that produce is heading all around the state and nation. We partner with the West Michigan Home and Garden Show. And with that, I'll just share that we have a large presence there, teaching lots of classes to attendees at the show. This year's sessions attendance reached nearly 2,000 folks, and the sessions included smart gardening. Beekeeping is a hot topic. Pollination is an important piece of our state's economy, so we spend a lot of time educating folks on pollination practices. And finally, I want to just spend a minute on our 4H youth development. A lot of folks know Extension and associate 4H, rightly so, with Extension. In Kent County, we have two 4H program coordinators, a educator, supervising educator, who provides guidance for them. We served 340 youth through those 4H activities. We have 35 active year-round clubs, and as you see, the reach beyond the clubs are special one-time events which reached about 1,700 participants. So our youth development will continue to be an important part of our operations in Kent County. With that, I will take any questions.
Very good. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Just a quick question. I've been hearing a lot about the restrictions, both federally and across the world, about fertilizer uses, the use of nitrogen. This is going to be a really tough year with, obviously, with the drought. We're expecting prices are going to be skyrocketing. It's really tough being a farmer these days. If it's not one thing, it's the next. Is there anything that's being done from a lobby standpoint to offset some of these restrictions that are really hurting farmers from being able to efficiently produce our food?
We have worked with industries that you referred to in terms of commodity, not just the farmers, but the fertilizer producers. And although we have lobbyists that represent our interests, we don't lobby directly, of course, through MSU Extension. It's ongoing. The ag industry is well, I'll say, well-represented in the state government, and the level of importance is certainly recognized. So I'm continually hearing of efforts to improve the situation for farmers. Just in reference to your first comment, too, in MSU Extension, one thing we do do is invest heavily in farm stress-type issues, too, understanding that it's not an easy life. So we have a team of folks who are delivering resources to farm stress. They are another one of those specific groups who are very high at the top of the list in terms of potential for suicide and just mental health challenges due to the stresses of that. So probably didn't answer your question as directly as you would hope, but yeah, it's an ongoing battle to make sure that our farmers are well-supported, and I believe that the state of Michigan is well-aware of some of those challenges and the federal government, too.
I appreciate your awareness. And one of the problems is when you have family farms that are generally taken over by family members, they're seeing stress in mom and dad's faces, like, why do I want to get into this?
Yeah.
It's all part of the process, and what happens to those small farms when they go away, that's going to be devastating. So I appreciate all your work.
Yeah, and in Muskegon County, in one of my normal, normal, that's not appropriate, in one of my other counties that I provide some leadership to, we have a farm business educator who spreads down into Kent County and further south, does a lot of work in terms of succession planning, trying to help folks, again, work through those transitions, because it is a truly challenging proposition to keep farms active and viable at this point.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. James, thanks for being here today. Appreciate your report. So on a bigger scope, yes, we are number two in the nation in crop diversity, behind California. I don't think they grow cherries and asparagus are the two of them, but the one thing we've got in the whole Great Lakes region is we don't seem to have a problem with water. However, in our state, I'm seeing more and more that a lot of the prime farmland is under pressure, and isn't from emotional distress, but neighbors that are selling 500 acres to a battery plant. You know, it seems like the auto industry, wherever there's land that they want, it's prime farmland. I mean, what does the future look at, and how is MSU Extension looking at that? I mean, we can be number two in the nation, but if we don't have the land to grow the food on, that's quickly going to go down.
Yeah, great comments. I'll share that firstly, we have certainly become familiar with our catchphrase, maybe number two in terms of diversity, but we're number one in the nation in terms of diversity with access to a fresh water supply. And that is huge. If you're following what's happening out west in terms of the water challenges in California, it is a massive challenge that's affecting a lot of industries. I think the other piece to that briefly is with some of the slow but steady changes in environment, you know, the opportunity is rife for Michigan to take on more of a lead in many industries as the capacity to potentially bring in some additional crops as temperatures raise a little bit, and we have the water supply to kind of bring back some of that to the Midwest. Yep. There was a second part to your question, beyond the water. Oh, what are we doing to prepare? So the land use piece is, again, a massive industry, but one of the big talking topics across my counties, and I'm not sure about Kent County, but is solar power and the demand for land for solar power, and how do we utilize these big tracts of land where we can generate energy but still get value from the land? So whether it's that or auto industries, we have land use and planning experts within our network that do a lot of training within local government township associations to make sure that their zoning is appropriately set up to kind of control that issue, and that's kind of the first step, because as you step away into more rural communities, often the policies don't exist which allow them to control those situations appropriately. So we will continue to kind of advocate for farmland preservation through effective policies that have been well thought through and are in place. So that is a resource that may or may not be needed in Kent County, but we can be a supplier of information on how to set those things up to your advantage.
Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation. Thanks for all of this useful information. The only thing that I didn't see really referenced in here was the work that, are you doing any work, I guess, is my question, with smaller urban farmers that are, you know, trying to ensure that their communities that are typically located in, you know, food deserts are being represented and that those small farmers are able to, you know, work with their residents to be able to, you know, produce food for themselves or for their communities? What's being done in that arena?
Absolutely. So I didn't necessarily highlight another part of our team in Kent County is our community nutrition instructors. They are doing significant programming in terms of delivery of programming within school systems up to senior centers and all different pockets of the community. One of their other roles is to work heavily on PSC, Policy Systems Environment type work, and again, supporting, a lot of that comes through community garden support in helping them to establish those gardens, to understand a little more about volunteer recruitment, how to maintain them, ongoing process, feeding the produce into food banks, food pantries. So there is a team that's doing quite a bit of that. Depending on the size of the operation, of course, it gets a little more significant within an urban environment. There's a team of small business-type, small farm supporters that we have educators that can support those folks. We take a lot of calls from folks who are passionate about getting involved in addressing that problem and are looking to start their farms for the first time and come to us as beginning farmers. We have an online series called Beginning Farmers, which helps them understand all the pressures and pieces of that puzzle that need to be thought through in order to do that successfully.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Thanks, James, for the presentation. We appreciate it. We know a lot about the great work that the Extension does to support the ag community, and certainly that's valued immensely. Can't overstate it. I was really impressed with the presence that you guys had at the home show. I was there with my family. My daughter got to get involved with some of that. In the past, we've done the soil testing, and I've encouraged a couple of friends to do that. But my question is, what's the best way for us, outside of just saying, go to the website, to encourage non-ag, just other residents to engage with the Extension and services? Because I think as folks that maintain, you know, whether we're growing some food at home or we're just on our land, how can we help the pollinators, that sort of thing, just want to make sure we're pointing folks there because it's such a great resource that their tax dollars are supported.
Yeah, I really appreciate that question. I think honestly, connecting with your local Kent County office as a starting point to the resources is key. And often in my other counties, talking to other board members, I will share that, you know, it's you as a team that help us be the strongest that we can be in terms of connecting to community issues. We don't know what's happening in your local communities. So I have a previous statewide director who shared that our goal is to be in your top three list of organizations you might call if you've come up against a barrier, if you're struggling to move an issue forward. And don't worry about what that issue is. Call us to see what resources we can bring. It might fall outside of Extension's expertise, but within the university more broadly. So we are doing some excellent projects, bringing in the School of Urban Planning and Design into different communities, and the list goes on and on. And I have challenged folks, again, call me if you have a specific situation that you're struggling with, let me know and let me go to work to you in finding that resource. In five years, I've had obviously multiple requests for things that I thought were kind of obscure. In fact, in my first week, five years ago, with MSU Extension, someone asked me about motivational interviewing. Do you do anything with that? And I said, I'm not sure. I don't know what that is. But I was able to track down into the university level into our school of psychology where we had one of the founding people who did the research on that interviewing technique, who then became a key speaker at a training for a county health system to the north of here. So I love the challenge. Regardless of what it is, you should tap into Extension to see whether we can help, and we will tap into the university more broadly.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and we're just really grateful for the Extension, and it's just core to MSU's legacy as a land-grant institution, too. So thank you.
All right. If no others, again, thank you, James, for your presentation. I'm sorry. Oh, Commissioner Oliver King.
Just real quick, feeding back on Commissioner Green's comment. Thank you for your presentation. My daughter's participated in the 4H program. It's a wonderful program, so I would encourage anybody to do that, and we are glad that the Extension is in our community.
Yeah, we have about 1,000 youth on campus as we speak for an event called Exploration Day. So it's an opportunity for 4H members to spend some time on the campus and just explore, whether it's university-related, whether it's recreation-based, or anything else, but an awesome opportunity through 4H.
All right. Now I've covered them all. All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
James, for your presentation. We certainly appreciate our partnership with the Extension Service and wish you well in your search for a replacement for Aaron. Good luck on that. All right, our next item, a special order of business, will be Mr. Lance Werner from the Kent District Library.
Andy's going to kick us off.
Well, Andy's going to kick us off, right?
You will get Lance, though. He'll be up right after.
Yeah. We need our time with that guy.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Andrew Rewine. I am the board chair of the Kent District Library this year. I want to thank you and thank Kent County for allowing me to represent the interest of, their interest on the Kent District Library Board. Just as Kent County has attained a five-star credit rating from Standards &amp; Port, and they're proud of that, Kent District Library has also attained a five-star library rating from the Library Journal, and they're proud of that. And that's a data-driven metric where only 5% of the top libraries in the United States have. Proud of. I would like to share two things about Kent District Library today that I'm very proud of. In 2022, 4,223 new cardholders received Kent District Library cards this year, and that is 4,223 people that are being positively impacted by county-wide. The second thing I'd like to say that I'm proud of about Kent District Library is that after the whole COVID pandemic that we had, we have in-person programming that's starting back up. And that means for, you know, the little kids, we've got rough readers that they can do their beginning reading practice. For teenagers, we've got the Gather to Grow program, which is a partnership we have with For adults, we're reaching out through the evening book clubs that people are familiar with. And also, as mentioned by the last speaker, we have a farm workers appreciation program for adults in the Florida area where we provide library resources to those people. And then finally, for senior citizens, we have outreach programming where the library goes to the people in their senior living instead of the people having to come. So from beginning readers to senior citizens, the library. And that's only a small sample of everything that the library does. And with that, I want to be short and sweet, and I will hand things over to Lance Werner, executive director of the Kent District Library.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Lance Werner. I am the director of the Kent District Library. I'll be brief. Got a lot, some things to celebrate. I think the biggest thing is that our numbers are starting to go the right way. Our circulation increased 6% over 7.1 million. People served increased 28% to over 2.1 million, and computer and Wi-Fi usage increased 26% to over a million. And program and outreach attendance increased 61% to 0.11%. And program and outreach attendance increased 61% to over 294,000 people served. And we found out that we are in the top 60 libraries in the world for electronic book circulation. Our summer reading program and summer food insecurity program is kicked off and going well. Of course, our summer food program is done in partnership with Feeding America. One of the things we recognize is that a lot of kids have summer food insecurity issues because they're not getting school lunch. We also recognize that by having food in the library, you know, full stomachs make them, you know, kind of better positioned to, you know, enjoy the resource and get something out of it that's meaningful. And our summer reading numbers are getting back up to what they were before COVID. Of course, when we were closed, COVID knocked in-person usage down dramatically. And it's really great to see everything coming back. And then finally, one of the things that we're really, really excited about is that we have a new express library going into the Grattan Branch, well, Grattan Township Hall. It's a different model. It involves a self-serve kind of kiosk, and it's kind of a book vending machine, but we also are going to have a robot in there. You know, I'm an Xer, so I always think of R2-D2, and now R2-D2 works at the Kent District Library. Actually, the robot's name is Temi Robot. It's Israeli military technology, so it's going to be good for the kids. Just joking. It's actually, it's actually good. It'll be good for the kids. It's actually not, it's not combat, not a combat robot. It's a regular robot. But it'll permit us to have kind of live interactions with people in that space, and we're still going to be doing programs and things like that there. And the other beautiful thing about the Temi Robot is the Temi Robot can really, I think it speaks 56 different languages. So we think there'll be more and more of these robots in our branch. You know, we want to overcome all the barriers that people have to access. And there are, you know, Kentwood has, what is it, something like 65 or 70 languages spoken in the school, and we want to do the best we can to meet all of those, you know, varying needs. So we're really excited about that. And, you know, 2023 is going to be a good year for us. It's well on its way and going fine. And we sure appreciate all of you and your support, and it's always a pleasure to serve the people of the county. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think you hit the 10-minute mark on the nose. Good for you. All right, Commissioner Oliver King.
Hello, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I am a member, so glad to see you here presenting today. Do you still have the mobile?
The Wi-Fi hotspots? Oh, yeah, it's actually our most popular item. So everybody got some ARPA funds, it seems like, if you're a government, in any sort of governmental capacity, and we did as well. And so we spent all of our ARPA money on Wi-Fi hotspots. And the reason why we spent all of our money on Wi-Fi hotspots is we serve the north part of the county, and there's a lot of people up the north part of the county that don't have access to internet. And during the COVID crisis, when we obtained them, you know, a lot of people were having to go to school or work remotely. We wanted to make sure that we had, you know, resources available for them. We had iPads for circulation for a long time, and now we're to Chromebooks. But the Wi-Fi hotspots are the most popular item that we have to check out. There's always a waiting list. They go out for four months at a time, and they really help a lot of people connect with their electronic resources, just connect with life. I mean, so much of our life these days is done remotely and electronically, whether you're filing for your taxes or applying for jobs or going to school or doing telemedicine or whatever. Having access to internet's really, really important. So I don't see us increasing our collection. As we go forward, I know that the sort of the wireless desert and the broadband desert is becoming smaller and smaller and smaller. We're actually looking at now about the possibility of shrinking the collection over time. But we're going to wait and see what the, right now, the stats are way too high for us to contemplate shrinking the collection down. But they're pretty much deployed specifically with an eye toward broadband deserts. And so where people don't have access, so a lot of the rural areas, there are some of the urban areas that don't have good broadband access, and we just want to make sure that, you know, do the best we can to help people where they're at. Thank you.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lance, for being here today. I really appreciate your presentation. I myself grew up going to the Kent District Library. Sorry about that.
No, no problem.
I grew up going to KDL all the time. And even, and I still remember, you know, how many times my parents had to pay fees back when you all charged fees for late items, all the time. I can't even, I don't even know how much money that.
All that's gone now.
Yes, yes. And even after the recession here and my family moved out of Wyoming and into Grand Rapids, we still owned the home that I grew up, that we grew up in in Wyoming. So I chose to keep going to KDL even though I technically was in the GR Public Libraries District, just because of that history and that level of connection that you all have. And as a graduate from Godfrey Public Schools, we still have, I think, the Bookmobile or?
Yeah, we have a Bookmobile, and then we have, we still have some satellite library services there in the Alternative High School. And then we have a, we have a branch in the Kelloggsville High School as well.
Yep, yep, and I see that all the time in the district as I'm driving by. So just wanted to congratulate you all on your five, five-star rating there, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Well, I'll say for sure, it wasn't me that got the five-star rating. It was, it was the team. And, you know, when you work with a bunch of people that are passionate about what they do, you can do extraordinary things. And so it's, that honor really belongs to the employees of KDL and all of our volunteers and the people that use the service. And we're only as good as they are. So thank you.
All right, anyone else? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Lance.
Good morning.
I'm just curious. I also, as a kid, was a frequent visitor to a KDL branch. But even just the last, you know, 10 years with broadband connectivity and all the devices we all have, and, you know, the access to information is very different today than it is, than it was, you know, even just a decade ago. So I've got this question in my mind, seeing this on the agenda this morning, like, what is, you know, the point of a library today in today's world? And it seems like just, you know, reading over some of the things you do, you know, the hygiene lockers that have been installed, the non-combat robots, you know, all of this stuff that, the library is almost becoming just kind of a hub of like a public space, you know, public access to information. It's not really about like the books anymore so much. Is that fair? How do you see?
I think that's a very fair summary of what's going on. I mean, the library is, it's like anything, you either evolve or you go extinct. And the fact of the matter is, is that it was always our goal at the Kent District Library to be a hub, a place for the community to gather and try to fill the needs that the community have. One of the things that we're really exploring now is space for creation, workspace, things of that nature. We just want to try to, you know, meet people's needs where they're at, where it makes sense. A lot of times, we accomplish this through partnership, like our, like our food program. I mean, we don't gather the food, we partnered with Feeding America, and it works out well because we have 21 locations now, including Grattan. And so our footprint's rather large, and we get a lot of people that come into the library. And so if you're Feeding America, I mean, your goal is to connect people with food. And so the library, since there's already people coming into that space, there's sort of a natural partnership there where they can go. And there's people that come to us that, that are adults that didn't graduate high school that want to finish their journey. And so instead of us trying to finish their journey and do something home-cooked, we actually refer them to Sparta School District because they have a great program that permits people to get their high school diploma. And so we kind of ferry people through that way. So we're kind of a connector in that sense. But the, the use of the space and the nature of the entity is changing. I mean, we still are a repository, but I mean, that's not, and it is still primary, but it's not like a 90% primary. It's more of a 60% primary. And so we're always looking to, to do whatever we can to elevate different parts of the county. One of the things that we did that was a little kind of weird, you know, relatively speaking, is that, you know, it's not lost on us that Kent County is a huge beer brewing county. And so one of the things we want to do is highlight local brewers and local breweries, and also give people that are home brewers an opportunity to share their home creations with the public. And so we started the KDL program. And so the brewers, the home brewers come in and they, they have a number of different beers they submit, and, you know, there's a big test that goes on, and then there's a winner selected, and that winner gets to partner with one of the local small businesses that started in the county to have their beer brewed. And things like that where we can just elevate, you know, different sections of the community and highlight it, and that's big, that's the big, that's, I mean, I think that that's kind of the way forward for us. I think that libraries will always be a repository for books and things of that nature. But the, but the nature of them is going to shift over time, just like the nature of anything shifts over time. Nothing is static. I think that, you know, frankly, I'm on, one of the boards that I'm on is the Michigan State Historical Record Advisory Board, Mish Rab. And I hate rattling that off. And I mean, so Mish Rab is looking, what do they do? They collect the state records, which is really, really important, and will continue to collect them. But the call for that, you know, throughout the state is becoming smaller and smaller and smaller. We still need to maintain the record, but we're not maintaining it for the purposes that we were maintaining it for initially. That's where people went for the news. Now people can access a lot of those records digitally. And we wouldn't want to make everybody drive to Lansing to sift through the archives, which is really exciting if you want to spend a couple of days. But, you know, instead of doing that, they're all digitized. And so things like that, I think the nature of everything, I think the nature of this body is going to change over time. I think the nature of government's going to change over time, the nature of how we interact, everything's going to change over time. You know, now, the things that we're looking at are, you know, AI is on the rise. And there's AI in a lot of things right now, and that whole thing is going to continue to evolve. I think that we're about five years away from, I think we're in a Stone Ages of AI right now. I think in about five years, AI is literally going to be in everything that we interact with. And I think in 10 to 15 years, I think probably half or more of our lives is going to be on, is going to be virtual. You know, there's the Meta Project from, you know, Facebook, and it was kind of a flop. But I think that, that, that whole, that whole effort kind of demonstrated that it can be done. And I think unfortunately or fortunately, and I think that that's a fair assessment, when we had the COVID crisis, a lot of people figured out that they could do a lot of things remotely. And I think that there's a lot of people that don't want to come back into the workplace. I'm not making any comments for or against that, not going there. But I mean, it did prove to people that they could do a lot of things remotely. So I think that everything that we do all the time, one, the only constant in all of our lives and every single thing that we touch, interact with, our education, our work, our families, everything is change. And if you're not able to, to flex and change with change, the future's not bright. And so we will continue to do the things we're doing and look to places where there's a natural fit for us or try to highlight partner efforts and do whatever we can to meet community needs. One of the things about KDL is we're a popular materials library. So we buy popular materials. We buy things off of book lists. We buy things that people have requested. And so our whole kind of thinking goes around this whole idea of popular, what do people need today? That's the big question for us. What do they need today? Tell us what they need today, and we'll try to get it for them today. And what they need tomorrow is probably going to be different than what they need today. So we need to continue to be dynamic on everything that we do.
Follow-up?
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate the library system being proactive and at this evolution that, you know, clearly needs to happen. I'm just curious, your thinking then on like, how do you know as you're considering these various things, you know, the beer and the robots and all this stuff? Like, how do you know, like, what should be in the library's mission? You know, what library systems mission? What is kind of outside of that? You know, how do you assess whether or not, like, existing organizations, whether are private, nonprofit, and like, are already doing that? And so you should stay away from it?
I think that maybe you have a microphone, like a listening thing in the library headquarters. Because, yeah, that's exactly what we do. I mean, when we look at it, we look at, you know, we do kind of an environmental scan. Who else is in this space? You know, we ask ourselves, does the mission of the library match what, you know, match what we're trying to accomplish here? Is there somebody else in this space? Is the need being met? And if the need's being met and we identify an additional need, then, you know, we're going to look to refer people to the organizations that are already doing the work. Like in the case of the food, Children's Food Basket is an amazing organization. It does invaluable work, and we are in awe of them. I just have nothing but good things to say. They're really doing incredible work. But the fact of the matter is, is that there's more need than there is ability for them to meet the need. And you end up in situations where kids are like getting a bag, you know, from Children's Food Basket. And it's nothing against Children's Food Basket. They, like I said, they're extraordinary. But there's five kids in the family, and so everybody, one person gets half a banana, the other person gets half a banana, somebody gets half of a sandwich, you know, and they share a bag of chips or whatever. So we know that there was a bigger need than that, but we didn't want to undertake the expense of, you know, trying to meet it ourselves. So we looked, and we identified this with, throughout our, through our relationship with the Kelloggsville High School. This is where this all came. And so we identified right up the road from our service center is Feeding America, and they do incredible work again. And so we know Feeding America, their whole business model is connecting people with food. And so we decided to work with Feeding America without really taking on any additional expense and to help them accomplish their mission by connecting food with people and having a library branches be the service. And we were able to do that because what we did is just what you described. We looked at, we looked at what was the need was. We looked at who else was in that space. We were looked at, was the need being met? We looked at who might a potential partner be? And we thought about what would our expense be, you know, providing this service? Because we're doing it through partnership, we're able to provide the service without taking much overhead. And so it's cost-effective for us because we're also very committed to, you know, controlling costs and keeping our costs low. And, and, and that's pretty much the entire process. You've, you've nailed it. I think you have a very good sense of what we do.
Yes. I think Commissioner DeBoer was first.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lance, for being here. To follow up a little bit with Commissioner Coleman, I, I, as we all know, you know, libraries are a mandated service for cities and townships. And I myself have a hard time sometimes justifying something outside of the scope of a library. So how, how do you balance something that is a mandated service of providing, you know, books and circulation and materials with not interacting as much with the, with the private sector? I know your Beyond the Books program rents out like tools and different things and could potentially compete with the private sector and with businesses. So how, I mean, as a government service and, you know, there's no competition because you can provide that at no cost.
Right.
How do you, how do you make sure you're balancing those? I mean, because serving the public is a good initiative, but at the same time, we don't want to also compete with business.
I completely agree with everything you said. And so the fact of the matter is, and things like with our Beyond Books collection and tools and things of that nature, those are very small collections, and they're very central, and they're kind of, well, they're driven pretty much by people that live in that community that have interest. And then what we also know is that not everybody has the means to buy certain tools and things of that nature. For instance, we have our bikes. We have our bikes. We've had them available for several years now. And we have some people that utilize the bikes every day to get back and forth to work. And the reason why they do that is because they don't have the money to get their own bike. And so we think it's important to, to help those people be successful. And the other thing is, is that our ultimate goal is, in all of these efforts, and I don't think that, I think it would be a misnomer to say we always accomplish it, but our ultimate goal is to highlight the local businesses and what we do too. So for instance, back to my conversation about Feeding America, what we really wanted to do is help Feeding America be successful. And, and, you know, certain things like the Wi-Fi hotspots, which, like I said before, are really popular. I mean, there is certainly an argument that, you know, we could be cutting into some national organization or business, businesses like T-Mobile and some of the other Wi-Fi hotspot providers. I mean, that is certainly an argument to make. But what's also true is that they're not meeting the need, and not everybody has the means to get a Wi-Fi hotspot. And our mission when it comes to information isn't so much about the materials and the books, it's access to information. And so that's what our primary, you know, our primary goal is, is to connect people with information in that regard. And so things like Wi-Fi hotspots and technology meet that need. But there are certain places, I mean, we don't have a system-wide tool library or anything like that because it would be a disservice to the businesses in the area. You know, we don't want to do that. But where there's a need or where there's a huge amount of community interest, even the willing to subsidize that and buy things themselves to share with our neighbors. You know, we're all about that. We think that's, that's fine. So do we always walk that line? Well, no. But we try. And I think that, I think what I can say with confidence is there's always a good faith effort, and we will do our best to not step on toes. But sometimes it's unavoidable. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
You brought something up, and I don't know if you're editorializing a little bit or what, but I just feel a need to.
Was it the military robot?
No.
Okay, yes, I was just gonna-
About the AI.
Right.
You brought that up, and we're kind of at the embryonic stage of that. And it sounded like we're going to be, at some point in the future, we're going to be relying on that for like 90% of our information, which should scare the hell out of everybody, to be honest with you.
Don't scare me.
It, it should. Um, we are allowing, right now, if we go down this current path, Communist China's going to own that market. Why we want someone that hates us to control the information we're getting makes zero sense.
I don't disagree.
Okay, so that's, but that's where we're heading.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but-
But let me, let me finish.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, artificial intelligence could be manipulated. People are already worried about our sovereignty in this country, right?
Yeah.
So the minute we get away from human intelligence and reason and experience to go with somebody in a white lab coat somewhere cooking the books, we're done. And, and I'm telling you right now, we can use computers to, to help us, and technology and so forth, and every day. But when we start talking about relying on, um, a fake source of information that can be manipulated, and be taught in schools, and indoctrinate kids from kindergarten on up, it scares the living hell out of me. And I think it should scare everybody. And if you don't think this is true, take a few moments and actually do some research on what's happening worldwide with artificial intelligence. And I'm sure you're going to have a counterpoint, but we got to think beyond politics here and look at reality of-
Honestly, I don't have a counterpoint. I actually am in total agreement with what you just said. I, I mean, I'm not afraid of it, because I feel like we can train these kids that are here now. And actually, we're talking about doing a lot of esports. And esports gets kids familiar with, with the whole technology thing. And esports bridges everything. And there's, there's all kinds of computer programs up at Ferris. Um, I'm good friends with Dr. Pink up there, and we're working on some sort of arrangement to develop a pipeline for kids to get up there. I think that we can avoid a lot of the things that you're worried about, that you should be worried about, frankly, um, by ensuring that, you know, the next generations to come and the people that are in this space are educated, and are our people, that, that we have people here in Kent County that are working on this, these types of things, and, and educating people, and helping them understand what's going on. Because I agree, and it is something that everybody should be concerned with. I think that AI, we talk about it in the sense that, is AI going to replace us? No. One of the things AI can never do is replace the human connection people have with each other. One of the things AI can never do is to know somebody who walks in to, I don't care what your business is, you could be a library, you could be a store or whatever, to know who that person is, know who the kids are, you know, know who their parents are, know who, what, what pests they have, what's important to them, what they need on that day. AI will never be able to do that.
If I may, possibly not right now, but once these kids have been indoctrinated to the point where they're going to accept everything, that's where we, maybe we have enough fight back in us right now to reason through that. But, uh, I'm just saying, it's, to me, it's, it's dangerous, and, um, I, I don't want to fall into that trap. It's the future, and this is, this is something that's got to happen. It really doesn't. Um, and, and so we could probably write a book about this issue.
Yeah, we may need a work session on AI one of these days.
Well-
You're going to absolutely have to have a work session on AI. It's going to happen.
Chair, I, if I may-
I'm not being facetious, I'm saying sometime we will have to.
Well, I think we should do it sooner rather than later, if you're serious about that, because we can't just gloss this stuff over. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so thanks for, um, the wonderful, um, annual report. It was awesome to look at, um, to see that the usage is still continuing to go up, and that digital usage is going up. Um, and I did want to provide some clarification for Kentwood. We actually have 60 different countries represented, as well as, um, 80 different languages. So, um, I absolutely love, um, the Kentwood, um, the library, the KDL library in Kentwood, and have always been an avid, um, use, user of those services. Um, I remember in Lansing, that's where I'm from, you know, a very bookworm kid, always spent a lot of time in the libraries. And so the, in the services that were connected to that, I remember getting lunch when I walked in the library, from the library, and able to spend hours in there with a full stomach and be, have access to all of the things that really made life as a kid, um, who caught the bus down there, who lived in the inner city, and was able to, you know, learn a lot. And so I appreciate these services, and I really, um, do believe that the library, um, being able to dive into other areas and really bring people into the library, that they can experience the whole experience, whether they're checking out books or doing it online. And so I do appreciate the diversity of the services that you're offering, and I, I hope that you continue to expand and, and bring those services, um, you know, to fruition as our, our, um, you know, economy and as our population changes. Um, and, and even as someone who can buy books off of Amazon, I, I go to the library first. That's, that's the first place I go to see if you all have it. And I, I don't do that because I'm cheap, although I am, but I do, I do that because I believe that it's, it's, you know, checking out books from the library, I do it electronically now, you know, most of my books are, are audiobooks. But I do believe that I'm not the only one who sees that as a vital service for the community. I believe that it promotes equity and access for everyone, and it allows that information, um, to be gathered by anyone that has access to, uh, uh, you know, an in-person, um, library building, or, um, you know, virtually as they're checking these things out, um, in digital format. So I just wanted to say great work. I love that you produced so many, so much data in here to show how at each branch there is, you know, you're coming back from the pandemic low, right, and you're almost back to where you were before.
Can keep us down.
Yeah, and so I, it's just really impressive, and I would just say, keep, keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. But any comments I could have made, Commissioner McLeod just made a whole lot better than I could have ever. So I will withdraw my, uh, my, my need to speak.
Wow.
We'll keep that one on record.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, just real quick, I, as we talk about broadband and AI, um, what libraries also are showing right now is that places matter and community matter, and it's probably the main public institution that we interact with, at least in a positive way, uh, in our lives, other than maybe perhaps, uh, public schools. So I'm really thankful for that. I'm sure right now, as we speak, there are parents at a library right now breathing better, because they're interacting with other adults and their children are happy. And I know that that saved my mental health when I had to take care of the kids all summer long. So I appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate that libraries have, have proven the need for this human connection.
Well, and also to remind everybody, um, and thank you, um, the library is a good cooling center. I don't know about you, but it's, I'm, I moved to Michigan, not Florida, and it's been too darn hot for me. So anybody, anybody who needs a cooling center or anything like that, please come to the library. Um, come on in, you know, whatever, just, if you can get out of the heat, get out of the heat.
All right. Um, I do have one for you, Lance. So, uh, I'm going to follow up on some of the comments here. Uh, from my own, uh, personal experience with libraries in, in the law profession, uh, those were the heartbeat of the law practice. The library was the core. That's where everybody went to do all the hard work. And in a matter of five years, those disappeared. Those don't exist anymore. So libraries as places are gone in that profession. But libraries as a process is still the heartbeat.
Right.
And I suspect as you struggle with what is the scope of what you do, that's sort of a similar process that you're going through. And I guess my question is, you mentioned your board talks about that, but where are those conversations taking place on, on what does the library process look like going forward, and where should it be?
So what ends up happening is, we have actually system-wide conversations about a lot of these issues. Um, we have them with employees, we have them with people that, you know, use the library, we have them with managers, we have them at the leadership team, we have them with the board. And so what we're always doing is trying to develop what we feel is the best sort of model to base assumptions on. And so we're constantly reading the news, we're constantly looking at everything, we're constantly talking to people, and coming up with a model, and then making predictions based on the model, and then tweaking the model based on new input. And so this is a process that happens every single day. Um, it's one of the reasons why our numbers are coming up, but not everybody's numbers are coming up. It's one of the reasons why we're talking about AI, and not everybody's talking about AI. It's one of the reasons why we have a military robot from Israel, and not everybody has a military robot from Israel, which is actually really inexpensive, which helps. Anyway, bottom line is, is this process, this process happens at every level of an organization, every day. And then it's our duty, is the leadership team to inform the board and make recommendations, and then the same process goes through the board. And then they make, they make a decision based on something that we've made a recommendation on. Um, but it's something that you can't just say, okay, we're going to talk about it now. It's something that has to occur every single day. It's important to read all the news every single day. It's important to talk to people. It's important to have a good understanding of what's going on, and, and tweak your model every single day, because every day is not the same. And the way things change, particularly with technology, happens so fast, that if you're not looking at it every day, you're already way, way behind. And so that's how we try to stay ahead of everything. Do we always succeed? No. But is our track record pretty good? You bet. You bet. And I'd recommend that to any governmental entity. I'd recommend that to anybody who's a decision maker in any business. If we were all in the private sector, that's what you'd be doing in the private sector. You'd be looking at everything every day. You'd be looking at everything that's going on, and you'd be making predictions and decisions based on those predictions. I happen to be part of a Vistage group. It's a tech group full of CEOs from the manufacturing industry that have been enormously impactful on me and the way I think. And, um, and that's what they do every single day. Some of them work in steel, and some of them, you know, some of them operate, um, uh, I was at Graceland Fruit, uh, earlier this week. Um, I mean, just all over the place, these different industries, and they do that every day. And us as governmental entities, we should be doing that too, because if we're not doing that, we are failing our taxpayers. And so that's what we do.
All right, I'll let you go out on that one.
All right. God bless y'all. Have a good summer, stay cool.
All right. Thank you again, Lance, for your presentation.
Take care.
All right, our next item is public comment. If there was anyone here from the public that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items, and that's action agenda items, only at this time, you'll have an opportunity later in the, in the agenda to do general jurisdictional management. If you have anything that's specific to the agenda, you may do so now. Please identify yourself, and you'll have up to three minutes. And-
I'll quickly ask, is the budget an agenda item?
The budget is not an agenda item today. All right, next item, consent agenda. I'll on, call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Can you turn on your mic?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Is it supported by Commissioner Coleman? Discussion? All right, I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden-
Yes.
Teal-
Yes.
Sparks-
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Pakla-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Yes.
Merchant-
Yes.
McLeod-
Yes.
LaGrand-
Yes.
Hildenbrand-
Yes.
Hennessy-
Yes.
Green-
Yes.
Diaz-
Yes.
DeBoer-
Yes.
Burl-
Yes.
Boujack-
Yes.
Brevi-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Antor-
Yes.
Chair Steck-
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our resolutions. Item eight on the agenda, starting with eight A, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution eight A of today's date to approve the Kent County Community Development Act, Annual Action Plan and Appropriation coming to us from Kent County Community Action.
Is there support for that? Supported by Commissioner Wooden. Comments or questions? All right, I see none. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 63, Commissioners Wooden-
Yes.
Teal-
Yes.
Sparks-
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Pakla-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Yes.
Merchant-
Yes.
McLeod-
Yes.
LaGrand-
Yes.
Hildenbrand-
Yes.
Hennessy-
Yes.
Green-
Yes.
Diaz-
Yes.
DeBoer-
Yes.
Burl-
Yes.
Boujack-
Yes.
Brevi-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Antor-
Yes.
Chair Steck-
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 63 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item eight C, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
I move that-
Use your mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do that again. Eight B, I call on Commissioner McLeod. Two in a row.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I move Resolution eight B of today's date to approve the Kent County Community Action 630 Annual Operations Funding coming to us, obviously, from the Kent County Community Action.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wooden. All right, questions, comments on that motion? I see none. This also is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 64, Commissioners Wooden-
Yes.
Teal-
Yes.
Sparks-
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Pakla-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Yes.
Merchant-
Yes.
McLeod-
Yes.
LaGrand-
Yes.
Hildenbrand-
Yes.
Hennessy-
Yes.
Green-
Yes.
Diaz-
Yes.
DeBoer-
Yes.
Burl-
Yes.
Boujack-
Yes.
Brevi-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Antor-
Yes.
Chair Steck-
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 64 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item eight C, and we'll try that again, Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I move Resolution 65 of today's date, amend the 2023 Senior Weatherization Program, which comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Baker. Questions or comments on this one? All right, I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 66, Commissioners Wooden-
Yes.
Teal-
Yes.
Sparks-
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Pakla-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Yes.
Merchant-
Yes.
McLeod-
Yes.
LaGrand-
Yes.
Hildenbrand-
Yes.
Hennessy-
Yes.
Green-
Yes.
Diaz-
Yes.
DeBoer-
Yes.
Burl-
Yes.
Boujack-
Yes.
Brevi-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Antor-
Yes.
Chair Steck-
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 66 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our sec, uh, public comment opportunity. This time, if anyone wishes to address the Board of Commissioners on matters within our general jurisdiction, you may do so at this time. You will have up to three minutes. Please identify yourself and provide your address. Good morning.
Good morning. John Konstein, address 4286 Greenbrier Court, Southeast Grand Rapids, that's Grand Rapids Township. Thank you for your time. I'm representing, uh, GRAT, Grand Rapids Area Advocacy Team, a lot of labels here, which is a subgroup of Climate Witness There are about a hundred and twenty houses of faith here who have, uh, work with this organization. It works on areas of education, advocacy, worship, stewardship. I'm talking about advocacy here at the local team. Uh, we're running projects with state grants for housing improvements, improvements on houses of faith, especially low income areas. We're working with private sector on solar panels and churches, looking at vehicle to grid with MSU possibly, that's in the back pocket. But I'm here to congratulate you or thank you for your work on the Kent County Sustainability Park. Been tracking it carefully over the years. It's a lot of due process. It's a lot of work. Thank you. We feel it's exactly the right, well, it's the right time and the right place for this now. I know you're reaching an inflection point. Thank you for the journey so far. Keep going. It's innovative. It's an enormous investment in this local community where I've lived for thirty years. Thank you. It's good for the community. Uh, I trust you to wrangle it further forward in the process of due process. Thank you so much, and I saved my time. I seldom go under time, so I'm going to walk away happy.
Do we notice?
I'm sorry. I don't know the process. Do I take questions, or do I just leave?
No. We do not engage in questions. Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Good morning. Chairman Steck and Commissioner Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Kent County, west side of Grand Rapids. Again, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. That's my more important identity. Jesus said in Matthew eighteen, verse six, "Whoso shall offend one of these little ones which believe in me, it were better for him that a millstone were hung about his neck, and he were dropped into the depth of the sea." Just to follow up on the library subject, I would appeal to you as a citizen of Kent County, please do not allow pornography in these books. And please do not allow these libraries to become centers where these drag queens can read this garbage to our children. That's offensive. It's offensive to the Lord, and, uh, Lord have mercy on those that do that and allow that to these dear children. We just remember Juneteenth Day, when slavery officially ended so many years ago. But there's still a very real slavery still in existence in our nation today. The slavery and other, the slavery of children in their mother's wombs. And again, to quote Dr. King, "How can the dream survive if we murder the children? Every aborted baby is like a slave in the womb of his or her mother. The mother decides his or her fate." If you would watch a ultrasound, actually of a murder of a baby, they would use, again, a clamp, something like this, and as the clamp is inserted into the mother's womb, you would see the baby trying to escape, moving away from what the murderer wants to do, tear apart the baby limb by limb. That is slavery. That is murder. If you want to see one of these, see me afterwards. I have one on my phone, a video. It's gruesome. It's bloody, but it's always happening at three twenty East Fulton. Now, praise the Lord, business is way down there. In fact, there's days where no murders take place. And, uh, we are looking forward to the day when that place is shut down completely. And by the way, also Planned Parenthood, which I call Planned Genocide, who is murdering hundreds of babies, thousands of babies through the murder pill. Please do all you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I see no one else. We will now move to item ten in the Administrator's Report.
Yes. It's been a busy week, going back and forth, uh, with the Girl State Program. The American Legion Auxiliary Girl State Program is being held this week in East Lansing at MSU. And today, our statewide elected officials are being sworn in at the Capitol, and cities and counties have been in full swing since Monday, and now our state government starts work this afternoon. So our House, our Senate, our Executive Office, and the court system. So I've been working with the program since nineteen eighty-six. Uh, this year, for our Women in Government Panel, we did something different. We had three newly elected, uh, female officials, all three from the Kent County Board, and, uh, they served on the panel for an hour Monday morning, did a great job. So Commissioners Merchant, Oliver King, and DeBoer, uh, joined us in Lansing for that. Uh, let's see. Last week, Experience Grand Rapids had their strategic planning meeting in Columbus in Franklin County, Ohio, and, uh, they like to go to what they call an aspirational city-county area, uh, just to learn up a little on some of the good things they're doing. So, and I have to admit, you know, even though they have an awful football team there, it's the actual city and county are doing some really, some really good things. Uh, and, uh, some things I, I think, I, at least I took away some, uh, good lessons, uh, for some of the things we might do in this area as far as arenas, conventions, that sort of thing. Uh, and, Commissioner Hildenbrand also was on that board and, and made the trip as well. Just wanted to put a shout out for Matt Wolford today. Uh, Matt is retiring tomorrow. Uh, he's been with us a long time. Uh, first as our property description manager. So Matt came to us from East Lansing, original, East Grand Rapids originally, where he was a city assessor, and then he became the property and property description department manager. Uh, and, uh, we combined that my first time at Kent County into equalization. He became the deputy equalization director and later, of course, uh, equalization director for many years now. And Matt's kind of been an equalization director among equalization directors in the state, somebody who's done a lot of training, whose wisdom has been sought out on many matters regarding, uh, property taxes administration. And so, he does have a, a reception tomorrow afternoon, and so if you're able to stop by, uh, that would be great, and, uh, we just wish him the best. And that's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you, Al. We'll move to the next item, which is reports. Does any Commissioner have a report? Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Chair. The Fire Commission met last Friday at the MSU Extension Office. Thank you very much for sharing your offices, and, uh, we approved the purchase of a pumper fire truck for the Cedar Springs area. It's an honor and a pleasure to serve on that commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. Let's see if my mic wants to...
But I guess not. Uh, thank you, Stan. Um, I actually brought my notebook today, so
I want to share a couple of updates from the last month or so. On the first, I had a meeting with Chad from KCCA, who's in the audience today. We talked a little bit about the grants that were, um, dispersed from KCCA. Um, and I feel like it's, fits well with some of the things that we've been talking about today. Um, there were three local government, um, applications that were approved for funding. So there was a water metering improvement that was approved, um, in Sand Lake, um, a sidewalk project in Gaines Township, um, and also funding to redo the township library in Tyrone Township. Um, so great to see that those projects were approved. Um, also have a note here that this was the first year that a scoring committee was used for the nonprofit funding, um, and it was opened up to non-county staff, and, um, I heard from Chad that that process went pretty well. Um, so looking forward to seeing that in the future. Um, also, on June ninth, I had a meeting with, um, the High Speed Rail Alliance. So this is, um, a nonprofit that is working on trying to partner with local governments throughout the country on, uh, creating investments in, in, uh, high speed rail. Uh, and we talked about how Kent County could potentially, uh, partner or collaborate with the Alliance as we hopefully move forward and, and, and try to see what the future of transportation will look like in our county. So I have a little bit of information, um, that I got from, uh, the Alliance that I can share with you all at a, at a later point. Um, and then finally, um, I was invited to, um, uh, participate, um, in a event this evening, actually, for the, uh, what's it called? The Boys State, I believe, and I believe Commissioner Wooden was also invited to participate at GBSU this evening. Um, uh, my understanding is that this is an organization that works with, um, young, um, boys or men from the area, um, who are participating in, um, politics or learning more about politics in any way that they can. Uh, so looking forward to this experience, and I'll be glad to report on it once I come back, uh, or once we all come back at our next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I wanted to report that, uh, the Affordable Housing Revolving Loan Advisory Committee met, um, I believe, two weeks ago, um, and, or, no, it was last week. Sorry. Time is flying. Uh, met last week to, uh, for what we hope was the final official meeting. Uh, we were able to review, um, the kind of proposed parameters for the first year of our, uh, loan fund process, um, with, uh, IFF as the designated CDFI. Um, you know, provisions including, uh, income ranges, um, to serve, but most notably, um, uh, ways for us to put in place, uh, our keen focus on developing affordable homeownership. Uh, that was a conversation had last year when the decision was made to invest these dollars on how we can help use this fund to grow affordable homeownership. And since that is a very small, um, almost boutique industry, if you will, in this community, uh, you know, while production may not be, uh, large in its first year, there is, uh, we've put in place mechanisms to really elevate that focus, uh, throughout the life of this fund, so we can grow more affordable homeownership opportunities here in Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to report? If not, we'll move to the next item, miscellaneous. Does any Commissioner have a miscellaneous item? Commissioner Hildebrand?
Uh, thank you, Chair Steck. Uh, real quick, I put in all of your inboxes a invitation to the ribbon cutting for the new county fairgrounds, um, as was talked today by the County Extension, who, uh, coordinates the four H program, um, in the county, as well as, um, uh, you know, a lot of our constituents are involved in the four H Fair and, and the county fair that happens, um, every year. It's not just for rural kids. I'm a farm kid, but we've got suburban and urban, like Commissioner Oliver King was involved, obviously, um, in the four H program as well. So encourage you all to come out to the ribbon cutting. Um, the organization received some ARPA fundings for all of those of you who were county commissioners last term. Appreciate that. It really, um, was an injection of lifeblood into the project. We've been working for years to move the county fairgrounds out of the city of Lowell. It's built in the nineteen thirties, out to a new location. So it's out in Lowell Township on a hundred and forty acres of a former golf course. Beautiful. We've got five brand-new big barns with a huge show pavilion, and a lot of work has been going on over the last couple of years. So encourage you to come out for the ribbon cutting, and then, of course, the county fair starts on July thirtieth for the, uh, for that next week. So there'll be a carnival and all kinds of events. So hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Steck. Just a couple of things quick. While, while you had mentioned you're on the Fire Commission, um, if you, anyone has time, take time. Just go to YouTube and type in electric car on fire on a highway, and this might be something the Fire Commission should probably look into, that when those vehicles catch fire, it's over an hour to put it out, and those batteries explode individually. So watch it, it, you know, with this big push of everything electric, need it right now. There's a lot of things that people are overlooking, and that's one of them. And lastly, I want to thank my colleague next to me, Commissioner Diaz. Uh, he invited me to the, uh, Factory Yards Tour. That was yesterday. I always love watching people that can look at a abandoned, well, not abandoned, but just an old building that's not being used and dream of what it could be. So I appreciate the invite to the tour. And then finally, you know, I want to thank Al for serving with the Girl State. And there's been some mention of Boy State. I guess that's why I am here, is I was a Boy State graduate. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to, um, um, let everyone know that there is a free swim clinic going on this weekend on Saturday. Um, it's being hosted by, um, the Adipai Sigma, or excuse me, yeah, Adipai Sigma Chapter of Sigma Gamma Ros sorority in collaboration with the city of Grand Rapids. It's something, it's a fourth annual event. It is to promote water safety for children. The target audience is, um, children's age five to fourteen. It's a free clinic. Um, there's three sessions, eleven, twelve, and one. Um, and there's still openings if people want to, um, to, uh, come to that, and it is really to support water safety. As we know, that one in four children ages one to four drown, you know, die by, um, you know, drowning, and the statistics for ages five to fourteen is one in, um, in, I believe, one. It's the second leading causes of death for children in that age group. So this is really important. It is a free clinic that anyone can register on the city of Grand Rapids website, um, to attend, and so I would ask you all to promote that to people that you might believe would be interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Chair Steck. Um, just briefly, I know I brought this up before, but I wanted to bring it up again. Um, I'd really like us to consider, or ask us to, um, put the action request memos in the board packet for full board. Um, I know that that's a, all of us that serve on one of the other committees see that, um, but we don't have that great line of sight between the two committees all the time. And I think more importantly than for our education, uh, for members of the public, um, who might have a lot of trouble understanding an issue without the context of the memo. So, um, just, uh, I'll call a soft request that we, that we consider that moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Chair Steck. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Hennessy for inviting Major Tim Meyer of the Salvation Army for the invocation this morning. Your, uh, sharing of his bio was just, it was amazing. You have individuals like Major Tim, serving their entire life quietly, and then on a day like today, we find out all of the great things that Major Tim has been doing his entire life. So thank you for inviting, uh, Major Tim in and, um, for sharing with us the Salvation Army and their efforts to serve the people of Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I just wanted to take a moment to also thank, uh, Matt Wolford for his, uh, time, uh, as equalization director. Um, I, uh, you know, I myself am a huge, uh, as you all know, I'm a huge geek, I'm a huge nerd, and I'm a huge data geek. And, um, you know, when one data geek recognizes another, it's a, it's a very special bond. And, uh, uh, I've enjoyed getting to know Matt, uh, in my time here and learning from him. Um, not only the value that equalization provides, uh, as the foundation for our, um, public financial system, but also the, the way that that tool and, and equalization can be used as a tool for assessing our economic health, assessing issues like our housing crisis, our land use considerations, and, uh, um, you know, for his, uh, uh, help in, uh, uh, as I began to understand more and more the, the importance of, of equalization's tool as a data set and as a mine for data, uh, to make good policy. Uh, I am definitely grateful for, uh, for his time here. So, thank you very much, Matt, and, uh, best of luck in your well, well-earned retirement.
Anyone else? Commissioner DeBoer?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I recently have met with Leslie King from Sacred Beginnings. Um, she was trafficked here at the age of fifteen and, um, was trafficked for twenty years. And I just wanted to thank, publicly thank Josh Spencer for all of his work, um, in helping her find some resources for funding. So thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy?
Um, John Ball Zoo is having, um, a session tonight to look at, um, what the park and the zoo, what they are right now, and how we might want them to develop. If this is the second of, second session that they're holding, if it's like the last one, it's sort of on an open house type format, where you may come in, look at various maps, um, take post-it notes, write your comments. Um, of course, you know, the zoo itself is well taken care of and guided, and it really is. This is about the park. I mean, this is really about like, how are we going to handle park and parking, the two words that are so similar and very different in the uses that, as they are available to the, to the general public and to the neighborhood. But I believe that's from six to eight tonight. It'll be held in the ballroom at John Ball Park.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I have just a couple of items. Uh, first, I'll join all of us in, in thanking Matt Wolford for a, for a lifetime of service to Kent County. It is, it's been a phenomenal career for him here. Uh, I recall when he first presented to the commission when I